2024 to order, and I will ask the clerk to call the rule. Please Nancy.
Good evening, Planning Commission Nurse. Chair Rudeen.
Here.
Vice Chair Lightfoot.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Commissioner Beaumont to please lead us in the salute of our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will now move on with regular business, starting with communications. At this time, I will ask Director Morris if there are any communications or announcements for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Rudeen. There have been some supplemental communications related to our public hearing this evening. Those have been placed on the dais and also distributed as a commission and otherwise, and those will be touched on in the presentation for 7A. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will move on to approval of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion and then a second to approve the agenda?
Motion, motion of the agenda.
Motion by Vice Chair Lightfoot, and second by Commissioner Beaumont. Nancy, can you please roll call of vote?
Vargas?
Yes.
Yes.
Omai?
Yes.
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 Okay. Next item is business from the floor. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue that is not on the agenda. There will be a limit of three minutes per speaker. I welcome, I welcome anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding a topic or issue that is not on this evening's agenda to please approach the podium. Okay, I will close. Business from the floor. Now is time for the consent calendar. We have one item on consent, which is, which are the minutes from the July 16th, 2024 meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? None? Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar? A motion by Vice Chair Lightfoot, second by Commissioner Vargas. Nancy, can you please roll call vote?
Vargas?
Yes.
Omai?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We, all right, we will move on to public hearing this evening, which is to receive a presentation on the Molnar Residence Appeal. I hope I pronounced that correctly. We will first hear a presentation by staff, followed by commissioner questions, then I will open it up for public comment. May we please have the staff's presentation?
Good evening, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Alberti Analt. I'll be making the presentation for our assistant planner, Mr. Edward Lincoln. Item before you tonight is a Molnar Residence Appeal. Specifically, this is a request to, request to reverse or modify the community development director's approval of the Molnar Residence at 156 Adrian Court. The aerial image on the right of your screen shows the project site in blue with Adrian Court provided access to the north and Eleanor Nelson Park, which is abutting in this particular area. Marshall Road is also to the south, as well as New Alamo Creek. This is a project for, that requires a minor designer view and a true removal permit for one new single-family residence. It's a single-story proposal. The side area is 0.46 acres. The floor area of that single-family residence is 2,900 square feet, which also includes an 1,100 square foot garage. Access for this project will be provided off of Adrian Court. The project includes a request to remove a 34, 35-inch diameter valley oak tree, and the environmental determination for this project was categorically exempt from CEQA. The project was originally approved on July 8th of this year, and then it was appealed on July 17th. The grounds for that appeal was that broadly that staff erred in approving the removal of the existing tree. This map shows the location of the project boundary in blue, again, with some notable features. Adrian Court provided by a shared driveway with access to the site. Alamo Creek Trail goes along just touching the edge of the project sites. Dunbarton Drive is also visible on this screen that also provides access to Alamo Creek Trail. The existing oak tree is located pretty close to the center of the site, and you'll notice there's two other notable addresses, 146 Adrian Court and 152, that are also using the shared driveway that have already built. This project site is identified as residential low density in the general plan, which allows 3.1 to 5 units per acre. The zoning is residential low density with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. Staff felt it was important to establish the background that was, that led us to this particular public hearing tonight. It all started in July of last year when the city received a true removal permit from the former property owners, James and Brooke Scott. The city reviewed that true removal permit, visited the sites, took site pictures to verify the condition of the tree and the size of the tree and species. Ultimately, the city decided to deny that true removal permit because there was insufficient information to verify compliance with the municipal code. Later on that year, we received a preliminary review application, which is a initial proposal that lays out a particular project, and at that time, it was a proposal for a single-family home that would necessitate the removal of the tree. So for preliminary reviews, we review them, and then we provide comments back to whoever submitted them to better aid them in the next step of the process, which is submitting a formal development application. We provided those comments on December 8th of last year for that preliminary review proposal, but we noted that any proposal for a new single-family home on this property would require a minor designer view, a tree removal permit, as well as an arborist report. And the reason those three things are important is because if somebody's proposing to build something on this property, we would have to see how that building would interact with that existing tree and the condition of that existing tree to figure out how can something be built on this site. So that's what we provided to the applicant at that time. On December 29th, we received a new inquiry for removing that tree from new potential buyers, the Molnar's. We provided the same feedback in that preliminary comment letter via email. We also received from the applicant of the tree removal permit, Mr. Ryan Ferguson submitted a new permit on January 3rd of this year, and the same feedback that was provided initially for that preliminary letter was that we needed an arborist report, and we needed to see a minor design review that shows how would a house bill, be built on the site. Shortly thereafter, on January 11th, we received an arborist report that described the condition of the tree. Again, reiterating that, we were still in need of the minor design review, the third leg of that review. Another notable thing that we wanted to bring to the commission's attention was that the property sold on January 24th to the Molnar's. Ultimately, this led in the submission of a minor design review to the city, which is that third leg. We had finally received all three components on March 14th, and that leads us to, what do we do after that when we receive a development application? That is called the development review process. So in our hands, we have a minor designer view and a true removal permit, and our job at that point is to determine compliance with the Evacable Municipal Code policies, procedures, and standards. The first step in this evaluation process is to consider the true removal permit, to evaluate that request. Under our municipal code, there is eight criteria that have to be considered. It starts with project design, whether or not the project itself would impact the condition of the tree. Can a project even be built on this tree? Are there specific constraints associated with the site? What's the condition of the tree? Is it healthy? Would it be impacted by development? What's the species of the tree? Is it native? Is it non-native? What are the number of the existing trees that may be at the site or in the surrounding area? Would there be any sound foresting, sound forestry practice that could be considered as part of this proposal, such as trimming or pruning trees, maybe relocating trees, things like that? Size of the tree is also an important characteristic that we evaluate, too. If it's a larger tree, that's more visually prominent, then it has a higher preservation priority. Location of the tree, whether it's visible from public rideaways or other prominent locations, is also a factor that we take into consideration. And then the last criteria is whether or not there's any proposals or provisions for replacing. In our code, we have the ability for requiring replacement trees if somebody wants to remove a tree. So the tree in question for tonight is identified on the screen for you. The left shows an aerial view of that existing tree within the project site, and the picture on the right shows what that existing tree looks like from there. But we've, we felt it was probably a better idea to work with our media team to get you a better idea of what that site looks like. And so on the screen is a video of aerial drone footage showing that existing tree right there in the center of their screen. The property is triangular in nature. You'll see that is fairly large, approximately 45 feet in height, about 25 feet wide for the canopy. I will note that, you'll see, there's a lot of existing mature trees consisting of native and non-native species. Some of them are oak trees that were required to be preserved at the site originally when the subdivision was built. Some of them are kind of native to California and the North Coast, like you'll notice some redwood trees that were there. Those are trees that might have been planted when the original subdivision had been built. Really, the intent is to provide some understanding about where the tree's located, the size of how the property is being bound by existing fences, and a location awareness of where a lot of those existing trees are. Now, we'll note that along the top end of the screen, you'll see a lot of, a lot more canopies, and the noticeable feature about that is this is where old Alamo Creek used to be before they realigned it back in the 70s. And so a lot of those older trees that you see there are from that old riparian habitat that used to be there. So with that, we'll move on to what does our review of the criteria? What did we look at, and what was that analysis conclusive of? So we'll start with the design of the first criteria. This is a design. What we found through the evaluation of the site plan as well as arborist report was that the tree's large, and that means it also has a very large drip line. And a drip line is the extent of where the roots extend beyond the canopy. And so we found that through the design and the evaluation of our arborist report, that that tree and the drip line substantially reduced the developable potential for the site from 6,988 square feet to 2238 square feet. And I'll show you an exhibit in just a second. The second criteria that's kind of paired together is the condition of the tree. The arborist report found that the drip line was 1.5 to 2 times the size of the canopy, and any development activity that would occur within that drip line would affect the health of the tree. So these are the two components that we start off with. How do we design a project at the site? And then would any type of design at this project site affect the health of the tree? So I'll turn to this exhibit here that shows, the pink area in dash is the developable area when you take into consideration the required setbacks that are obligated in the municipal code. So you have a triangular trapezoidal type of shape that is identified in the pink dash line, and then you have a solid line to represent the tree canopy. And based off of the arborist report, you have 1.5 to 2 times the drip line. And that's the reduction from 6,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. It shrinks the amount of developable area, and that's the first observation that we found, was that due to the size of the tree, there really isn't a good spot to be able to put this house and any public improvements on the site. The other thing that we noticed about this is that you'll see that the dash lines of the tree drip line extend beyond the property lines into the drive out. And one of the other things that we had noticed during the development review process was, when working with our fire department colleagues, they needed a specific design component added to the project in order to be able to get adequate emergency access. They needed what was called a hammerhead driveway, and the design of that driveway substantially encroached within that drip line. And I believe the applicant may have an exhibit for the commission for later on during the public comment period, but that was one of the things that we had observed about the project design, was that not only was there a constraint for building a house, but there was a constraint created by the need to provide emergency access to this project site. Third criteria is the species. Native species have a higher preservation criteria versus a non-native species. Valley oak is native to Vacaville, so it ticks a box of a higher preservation priority in that category. The number of existing trees on the The number of existing trees on the property or in the surrounding area is also important since if we're looking at the only tree on a property where there's no other trees, that's significantly more noticeable. Based off of the aerial imagery that we provided in the drone footage, you can see that there's a lot of mature trees within this area. Forestry practice, we didn't find that there were any other existing trees on the project site for which if they remove this site, it would ensure the survival rate of those other trees. So it doesn't really apply for that particular criteria. Size, it does have a higher preservation priority because it is large. It is considered a large tree, standing at 45 feet tall and 25 feet wide for the canopy itself. Location was kind of interesting because it's not visually prominent from any public right of way, from any street, but it is visible from the Alamo Creek Bike Trail. But the code looks at is whether or not it's visually prominent from the street. The last criteria that we had looked at as part of this evaluation was whether or not the property itself had the capacity to be able to accommodate trees on the site. And the arborist provided evaluation verified, yes, you know, this property is large enough to be able to replant species at this location. And so that sums up how our evaluation looks like when we're considering the treatment of a permit, the criteria and the findings. Once we are able to check all those boxes and realize, you know what? We really, we're not too sure about whether or not this tree could retain as well as a project being built on there. We do have findings, we do have reasoning and all the justification and the explanations that are necessary to understand what this tree looks like and where the developable area is. And from that, we can move on to the minor designer view. That's step two in this development review process. The evaluation of the minor designer view application that's identified in our Vacuvale Municipal Code. And the goal of this evaluation is to determine compliance with the general plan, compliance with zoning regulations, as well as conducting public outreach. So when we were conducting this analysis, we found that the project would comply with the general plan. And it starts with consistency with the original vision for this area. The Oakview Unit 1, Unit 3 subdivision was originally approved in the eighties and was built out thereafter. And that original subdivision map identified three lots for single family custom homes that were going to be on Adrian Court surrounded by other single family home residential development in the surrounding area. So this proposal for a home was consistent with that original vision. We also found that the single family home proposal would preserve the existing character of the neighborhood by adding a home in a preserved existing neighborhood. There are other land uses that could be allowed within a residential district. Those might be churches, farmers markets that probably wouldn't, they would still be permissible or conditionally permitted within the zoning district. But really, we found that a single family home was probably better suited for this particular project site. And then that leads into that third part is it kind of protects from incompatible uses if you develop it with a single family home. Compliance with zoning standards was pretty straightforward because we have all objective standards. So what we found was at, at the setbacks, the house was located outside of the required setbacks did not breach the maximum building height and they were providing all the parking requirements that were needed for that single family home. We also conducted public outreach through issuing a new project notice on March 14th. We did receive public comments from three property owners mainly in opposition to removing the tree. So those aspects and those public comments were taken in consideration when we were evaluating these two land use entitlements. But ultimately, as part of this project, a letter decision by the director who approved the project on July 8th, but it was based off of findings. The project was consistent with the regulations and standards that were identified in the general plan and the zoning municipal code, that the proposed house is comparable in size and design to those existing homes that are on Adrian Court in the surrounding residential area, that there was sufficient information about the tree that was provided through the arborist report, and that the removal request was consistent with other things that we had found on Adrian Court. Specifically, at 146 Adrian Court, we had researched our records and found this wasn't the first time that a tree had been removed in this area. Back in the eighties, a tree was necessarily be removed from 146 Adrian Court in order to be able to accommodate the construction of a home on this area. We also found that based off of the project design and the arborist report, it was just infeasible without removing the tree. And that likely explains why no development has occurred on this lot since the eighties when the lots were created. Shortly thereafter, when these lots were created, the other two properties did develop around 89 and 90. And so this one has sat vacant since then. And that, the last thing that was taken in consideration was that the project site would be able to accommodate all those six new oak trees that were required to replant at the site. The director's decision can be appealed and there's a couple of ways that that can be done. An appellant can submit an appeal application and submit the application fee. Or the city council or the city manager can call for review. And that's exactly what happened in this case on July 17th. Councilmember Wiley called for review. So a call for review is, it's equitable to an appeal from decision makers like city council or the city manager. It's equitable to like a math class where we can show you what the answer was, but call for review is show us how you got to that solution. And that's exactly what this call for review was. So when the appeal, appeals also have to identify the grounds or the reasons for why the decision is being appealed. And in this particular case, procedurally, the planning commission inherits the responsibility to make a decision. You are the new decision maker for this project as well as the appeal. So there's a few options that's available for the commission tonight. You can deny the appeal and approve the project. You can approve the appeal or deny the project. Or you can modify the project based on the appeal grounds. Ultimately, the commission's decision could be appealed to city council. And that brings us to the appeal points. So the grounds for the appeal are can probably be summarized into five points that were identified in the staff report, but I'll just summarize them here. The first point is that the appellant states that the prior owner, owner, not the current applicant owner, applied for a true removal permit. We found this to be true, but not in the sense that would affect the evaluation of the land use entitlement. And here's why. The applicant, Mr. Ryan Ferguson, has represented both property owners. And so in our municipal code, it says the property owner or its representative can file true removal permit. So although they might have said that the previous property owner is identified on the removal permit, Mr. Ryan Ferguson has represented both property owners and that does comply with the code. The second point that the appellant makes is that the states that the city's tree removal permit references a defunct tree removal section from our municipal code. This is true, but it doesn't affect our evaluation. We still look at the requirements within the municipal code for our evaluation. And that's what we did and that's what we explained to the commission early in our presentation. We will note that that true removal permit form has been updated with the correct code references. It's also available on our city website, the correct version is now. The third point of the appeal is that the appellant states that the director ignored the criteria under the municipal code and did not justify the decisions for removing the existing tree. We didn't find that this was true. Staff did conduct a very thorough review of the code and determine the compliance with criteria and the standards that's identified in our staff report. This is just us showing our work of how we got to that point. The fourth point is that the appellant states that the two custom homes that were built on Adrian Court at 146 and 152, that they preserved existing oak trees by constructing a pure post-construction, not a slab design for a foundation to allow roots to breathe and states the applicant should follow these practices. What we found was this wasn't quite true because a tree removal permit had been approved for 146 Adrian Court. And at that time, back in the eighties, that was to remove a 20 inch oak tree. The other thing that we noticed about this particular claim was that there wasn't really any evidence to support that to override the arborist determination that a pure post-construction would not impact that root zone. And then the final appeal point that we wanted to point out was that the appellant states that the arborist report is backwards because the recommendation is to remove a healthy oak tree. An arborist report isn't necessarily, it isn't just there to evaluate the tree's health. It's also there to evaluate the viability of whether a project can be designed to ensure the survivability of that tree. And that's what that arborist report was intended to do. It found that the tree was healthy, in fact. And that any development within the tree's sensitive root zone, that 1.5 to two times the canopy size would impact the future health, structural integrity, and stability of the tree. And for this reason, the arborist recommends removing the existing tree. So I'm wrapping it up, I promise. In conclusion of our presentation, we just wanted to note that the grounds for appeal, they seem to be without merit and that there was no real error that was made by the director of community development or staff. We identify all eight criteria in the city's tree preservation ordinance and they were considered. But just due to the regular lot shape and the size of the tree's drip line, development is just infeasible without removing this tree. We'll note, public outreach, we did send out a new project notice on March 28th. We noted those three comments earlier that were opposing true removal permit. For this public hearing though, we did send out the same, a new notice to those same recipients on August 7th. Two comments were opposing a free move permit were provided in the staff report. But after the staff report was published, we received four additional correspondence. I know I'm identifying three on the screen, but there's a fourth one that was received before I could update the presentation. The first one was an updated arborist report that goes in a broader detail about the tree and other, some smaller scrub oak trees that are out on the site. But it, you know, further reaffirms that original assessment. The second letter was an email from Ms. Kathleen Ramos, the real estate agent for the property, for the former property owners. The third item that was received was a letter from the former property owners outlining their interactions with that property and the difficulties that they had experienced. And then the fourth item that I'll note was a response from a residence to the staff report from Mr. Jay Yerkes. All projects need environmental review and the environmental assessment that we had concluded for this project is exempt. It's exempt from additional environmental review. There's two sections that we'll note that support this determination. It's under section 15303, which says no environmental review is required for a new single family residence when it's within an approved subdivision. And then section 15332 is no environmental review is required for in full development of less than five acres when there's no impacts. So that's the same determination that we're presenting for tonight's evaluation by the commission. And with that, we have a recommendation for the commission by simple motion to approve the resolution to deny the appeal, but affirm the community development director's approval of the Molnar residence, minor designer view, and true removal permit at 156 Adrian Court, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, Mr. Ryan Ferguson, is also here, as well as the current property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Ben and Liam Molnar. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for the staff report and really liked the drone footage. Much better than Google Maps. Okay, so do we have any commissioner questions so far? I don't have my list. Yes, sorry. I didn't ask how to allow the mics for everybody because we have a new setup. Corey, can I please have your help? No, it's, I thought it was this. I apologize. Try to embarrass myself at least once a meeting, so here we go. Okay. Commissioner Beaumont has a question.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Albert. Appreciate your report. Just one quick question. Did you ever look at the house plan and how it sat on the site in relation to the tree when you made this decision?
Yes. Yeah, that was one of the considerations. You know, the odd thing about this, and I noted it earlier, was that, yeah, the house seems to have a four car garage. It's located within the tree drip line. That was kind of secondary to the main issue that we observed, which was regardless of any type of house configuration, in order to be able to get adequate emergency access to the site, the fire department necessitated and required a hammerhead driveway. And that driveway is the main culprit behind the impacts to the tree is that it gets right within that root zone. It has to be excavated and dug out so that way it can support the poundage of those larger apparatus vehicles. And so that was one of the aspects that was considered as part of the design was that even without the tree, without the house configuration being a one story versus a two story, that was really going to significantly impact the tree's health.
I guess it would have helped us if we could see that in the presentation. That's all.
You know, I think it might be if it's at the chair's interest, the applicant did provide. We, I think that was probably an oversight on our part that we probably ought to have that. But the applicant does have an exhibit that would be available to the commission that shows where that hammerhead driveway shows on the project site.
Thank you.
Is there anything we need to do to bring that up? Or I mean, I mean during public comment, but is it readily available?
Yeah, the applicant has it here tonight.
Perfect. Cool. Okay, Commissioner Vargas.
Quick question. The, I know some, some trees, the roots are pretty, pretty aggressive. So this tree here, it looks like it's somewhat adjacent to a home that's backed up. That drip line, did it extended to that property, that home? I know some trees are very water seeking and this looks like a pretty dry piece of land.
Yeah, the approximation that was provided by the arborist was that the root zone would extend anywhere from 1.5 to two times the canopy.
Got it. Thank you.
It's possible that it could be in there. It's possible that it may not be there.
Gotcha.
Do we have any other further commissioner questions? Okay, then I will open up public comment. If anybody has public comment. I think there's a mic button there. There we go.
Good evening, Jane.
152 Vacaville Court, Adrian Court. While we appreciate staff satisfactory responses to our questions about technicalities and staff's denial of the 2023 request to remove this tree, we wish to challenge some of staff's municipal code interpretations, which led them to approve this 2024 version of this tree removal, causing community discontent, which led to this appeal. 1409 250 1060 C2 Tree Preservation, Tree Removal on Private Property Review and Determination has eight sections you heard tonight, which we believe staff have misrepresented. Commissioners, it's now up to you to be the arbiters of whether the language in these eight sections was fairly followed and has thus justified this oak's removal, or if the protected oak lives. A. High priority to designing construction around existing trees. House plans have always existed to build around this existing oak. Applicant wishes to use their own design to put a four car parking pad in the place of this oak, literally tearing down paradise and putting up a parking lot. B. Condition of tree shall be determined by its general health. This is a 250-ish year old heritage valley oak tree in perfectly good health. C. Native tree species shall have a higher preservation priority. Check. It's a valley oak in the Oak Valley subdivision or Oakview. D. Consider the effect upon the aesthetic and visual quality of the area. Being right on the Alamo Creek bike path, hundreds of people daily walk past this oak. E. Sound forestry practice. Staff claims this criterion is not applicable. Disagree. As the number of healthy trees that a given parcel of land will support shall be considered, staff's mitigation plan to plant six other oaks on the property is problematic. F. Larger, more visually prominent tree shall have a higher preservation priority. Check. Staff agrees. G. Higher preservation priority on trees with a high visual impact to the neighborhood. Being the only tree in the front of this property and on the busy bike trail, this massive oak certainly has a high visual neighborhood impact. H. Replacement proposal. While this half acre site theoretically could support six other trees, their proposed sighting will cause future issues for the existing drain, existing wall, and existing pathway intrusion. The existing oak tree, however, has no problems with the drain, wall, or pathway. On point four, staff claims no evidence to support pure post-construction near an oak, but this planning department did allow us to build this way just 18 inches from a similar massive oak tree at 152 Adrian Court in 2016. Staff also allowed the original home construction in 1989 to be built around the property's oaks. None were removed. Today, all six of these oaks are perfectly healthy. Finally, on point five, staff claims there is no merit to the notion that the arborist reports remove the healthy tree is backwards. Yet, for our 2016 project, we used a certified arborist that has been vetted to do years of work with the city of Vacaville.
Your time is up. Thank you.
And he correctly advised us how to build nicely alongside our oaks and not chop any healthy ones down. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, go ahead and hit the mic and it will start. There's a button for the microphone and I'll start your time.
Hello, my name is Tracy Salkowitz. My husband, Richard Edwards, and I live at 146 Adrian Court. So issues. One, this is an incredible gift to our community, this tree. It's beautiful. It's been there between 250 and 300 years. We do not have a problem with someone building a home on that property. We have a problem, problem with bringing down the tree. The environmental impact, the aesthetic impact, all of it. I will say that after reading the report from the planning department, I was furious because how I read it was they made a decision, they wanted to grant the permit, and then skewed their answers to comply with how they wanted to, the end result to be. So just a few points. One, the two-story residence is not consistent with area homes. On our little lane, there are two houses there and they're both two stories. This would, having a two-story house there would totally fit in with, with that little lane. Valley oak trees are prevalent in the area. Okay, it implies that we got plenty. We don't have plenty. This is a statewide treasure and they are in fact protected trees by the state of California. Three and four, existing trees does not affect the aesthetic or the location of the tree is not visible to the public right of way. This was the most ridiculous response because hundreds of people utilize the Alamo Creek walkway and bikeway. Our house is famous. I can't tell you how often people say, do you live in that house? We pass it all the time when we're walking. They see the tree, they love that tree. So if it's not apparent from the court, if somebody's in a car, okay, but still hundreds of people are seeing that. I want to make a, a personal comment about wanting a single story home. When my husband and I went to look at this home, I did not want to buy it because it was a two-story home and I have arthritis in my knees. And he said, honey, you will never have to go on the second floor. His office would be there, we'd have a guest room and a guest bath there. Our life is on the first floor. And that is how it's been for the last three years. One final comment in saying and referring to the 1980s, when an oak tree was removed in order to build our house, we've only lived there for three years. That was over 40 years ago. Times are different. In point of fact, it's my understanding that that area was a Native American burial ground and the city paid people off to be able to build in that subdivision. That would never happen today. We evolve as a people, we evolve as a community, and we evolve with climate change.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
We have any additional public comment speakers? Come on down. There's a button to turn on the mic and it'll start your time.
Commissioners and the public and our new neighbors. I did not receive any of the notices, so this is my first opportunity to give my little feedback. I am here to speak for trees and for nature because trees are voiceless. I speak for a particular mature valley oak that resides peacefully adjacent to the Alamo Creek bike path, just 150 steps from my front door. I live at 160 Adrian Court. I walk that path daily with my dog. And I'm very close to where the site of this house is going to be. I've lived on Adrian Court for 27 years and I consider this lovely tree an old neighbor. Whereas the Molnar's are strangers to me. They propose to build an oversized, single-story house with a four-car garage on a tiny lot, which can only be accomplished by evicting this old, beautiful tree. Add a parking pad for five more cars and a potential swimming pool. Well, no space left for this silent oak. Not very neighborly, if you ask me. Now, oak trees are known for their capacity to provide shelter and food to an enormous variety of organisms, numbering well over 200, 200 species, which include caterpillars, numerous birds, bees, other pollinating insects, moths, butterflies, squirrels, and a host of microscopic organisms. This age of climate change and perennial drought in California, I'm impressed with the excessive nature of this project. It is way too much house for this lot. I'm advocating for the tree to stay. Ben and Leah, I haven't met you, but why not consider a less lavish layout that would preserve the exquisite tree that you purchased on your lot rather than exterminate it? Why not choose to be wise stewards of your land by retaining the natural beauty site? Your new neighbors would thank you for it.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Please come on down. There's a button by the microphone to start your time.
I do that, right? Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm Kathleen Ramos. You saw my name up there. I'm the Realtor who sold the property. I've sold this property multiple times over 35 years. I have worked for Stanley Davis Homes for about 30 years as their private Realtor. I am not saying that people are wrong in their intent to save a tree. What I am saying, however, is that no one has the right to step on private property rights. We do not have the right to tell people to build a different house. If that lot has been approved for this house, the lot has been approved for the house. We tried to work through this for months and Mr. Molnar did his homework thoroughly. Previous buyers have done their homework thoroughly and we've come up with the same answers. So I honestly am completely confused as to why this isn't an easy solution. I also want to say, if you have questions for me, hopefully you've read the letters. Jim and Brooke Scott were the previous owners. Dr. Scott and his wife are on vacation. Unfortunately, excuse me, I am getting over a cold, so, but they're on vacation. They wanted to be here very badly, but they wanted to have an opportunity to answer some of your questions. And they have been through a difficult time with this lot, trying to build on it as well. Eventually, I sold them an old Victorian down on Main Street and they changed their minds about building here, but part of it was because they ran into so much resistance from the neighbor. I am saying that we do not have the right to step on personal property rights. There are a number of Realtors watching this and texting me and saying, we have to stand up for people. He followed the rules. He did not buy this property until he was approved. He has done everything right. And now I ask you to do everything right as well. Please. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Public comment, we can't do Q and A, but thank you. Okay. Thank you. There's a button there to push.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Salerno White. I live at 219 Macbeth Court. And if you take a look at this map, it's like on the, the upper side of that, if you will, if we're taking that type of orientation. We were actually happy to hear that there was going to be a home built here because our back fence has an empty lot and we feel there'd be security, so not opposed to a home being built. I'm a gardener, work a lot with native vegetation. We have a valley oak that we planted 30 years ago and its canopy is about the size of that solid circle. So taking a look at this map and imagining that valley oaks would be what's replaced, if you will. So we'd say six oak trees, I haven't seen the species designation for those. I assume they would be valley oak. I would hope they would be local valley oak and we're not just going to grab some nursery elsewhere. Complicated culture for drainage, soil, they need irrigation when they're young and no irrigation later on. But the idea that you're going to put six valley oaks on this size lot and have a home seems a bit ludicrous, to say the least, with all respect. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? Button there to push.
Not planning to speak tonight, so I was just listening. And I'm a neighbor too, because I live with John Salerno White. I'm his wife, Laurel Salerno White. And I was struck by a couple of things in the report that I just kind of wanted to bring to the fore, and that is, the arborist report was that the tree is healthy and in good shape and 250 years old or whatever, but if we build the house, we're going to damage it, so we might as well kill it now. That just made no sense to me. I'm just perplexed by that one. The other thing was stated by the real estate agent, who's a lovely person, and as I said, we welcome our new neighbors, but the idea that you don't protect trees on people's personal property is not actually accurate. Our neighbors have a protected oak in their backyard on one side, and on the other side, there's another protected oak and it has a huge canopy. It goes over into our yard and, and they're protected and are not allowed to cut those down if they want to put in things in their backyard that would impact it. They're just not allowed to. And so I, I'm really, really confused by those decisions made by whoever these people, the planner, planner people. So I just wanted to bring up those, that, those, those ideas that we should be thinking about and thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name is Leah Molnar. My husband, Ben Molnar, and I just purchased one, excuse me, 156 Adrian Court. We have been, and I've been in Solano County my entire life, born and raised here. My husband came aboard about 22 years ago to be kept in our beautiful county. We own a business that is a third generation owned construction company that my grandfather started. So we are not new to the area, nor do we want to go anywhere else. The home that we are going to build at 156 Adrian Court is going to be our forever home. That's where we want to retire. That's where we want to end, that's where we want to raise, finish raising our girls and raise our grandbabies, hopefully. I want to address a couple of things that have been brought up. One is the necessity of us building a single story home versus a two-story home. My husband, Ben, has been advised from his doctors that he will need double knee replacement within the next year. If he doesn't complete the surgery, it will leave him immobile and paralyzed. Arthritis has eaten away the cartilage in both knees, causing his knees to operate on a bone-on-bone capacity. He is in constant pain and has mobility issues really badly. I'd also like to note that we are not getting any younger than we want to live in a one-story home. Another thing that has been brought up that I'd like to acknowledge is the use for our garage. Again, mobility issues. The other part of it is that we have two teenage girls who have after-school activities, sports, jobs that keep them out way into the nighttime. I want the safety of my girls to be able to go from our home, excuse me, from the garage into our home. There are many factors. We have done the research, we put the time in, we've had two arborists now that we've conducted to have come out and do this tree. They estimate that the age of this tree is between 80 and 120 years old, not 250 years old. We have tried to, between the property setbacks, the fire department wanting a hammerhead, and also we had to give them four feet into our property in order for them to widen the driveway to access the other property. The drip line, the, the canopy being so large, it will not accommodate our home at all. We've also looked into actually moving the tree, but the cost of it was upward of $100,000. I am all about being neighborly. I, anybody that knows me knows that I am a friendly person and this is not the way that we wanted to meet our neighbors, unfortunately, but here we are. When it comes to building our home, it is exactly that. It is our home and we feel that we have tried our best to comply with whatever has been laid in front, in front of us, whether or not it be the city, whether or not being here tonight in front of you fine folks. So I just, I come to you guys, Edith, as a citizen, and we also want what's best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment? Okay. There you go.
All right.
There you go.
So I'm going to try and be brief here, so that way if you do have any questions for me, I'm in a somewhat unique position to answer them. I'd like to start by saying, like, this tree could not be worse situated on a lot in terms of any kind of development, and that was just incredibly unlucky. I would like, I would have preferred to have kept it as well. It definitely is an older tree. It's not 250 to 300 years old. There's been a lot of kind of misinformation floating around here that just because someone says something in an email that it's suddenly, you know, fact, and that's just not the case. There are some other things that I want to get over, but like I said, if you look at that cover sheet, C1, you'll see the dashed pink line, and then the canopy is actually about 63 feet, and I know that because I measured it myself in the north-south axis, and about 55 feet in the east-west axis. You can see it basically touches the pink dash line, which is my allowable building area. It's a 0.4 acre lot, which sounds like a large lot, but unfortunately quite a bit of it. And if you go to sheet C2, because of the shared driveway, see that long, narrow driveway? It's 115 feet and then another 142 feet. And then there's a dashed rectangle that is a kind of a deep pink and shaded color. The first 250 feet of this lot count, you know, for the square footage in that 0.4 acres, but it obviously is not buildable because it's a road. So when, you know, it just makes sense, why not put the house somewhere else? There's nowhere else to put it. Even a two-story house wouldn't really fit when you accommodate these setbacks and the, and the drip line. Everyone knows that you can't, you know, build underneath the drip line. Mr. Yerkes mentioned that he built something 18 inches away from an oak tree. I have no idea about that. I looked through his property records and I think it was, I know he did a gazebo and I think a small ADU recently, but we can't propose to build anything within 18 inches of oak tree. It just, it won't work from prior experience. That, and the canopy is too low to actually get a house or garage or anything underneath that canopy. It just physically wouldn't fit. Another thing I just kind of want to address, the house is not necessarily enormous in size. It's 2,921 square feet. It's a four-bedroom house. The house at 146 Adrian is 2727 square feet and the house at 152 Adrian is 2,400 square feet. These are all really comparable in size. They all have pretty comparable sized lots at 0.49, 0.45, and 0.40, I think, acres. So really comparable size, but like I said, what does kind of hurt us is losing a lot of our usable square footage with that shared driveway and then of course the setbacks. We are proposing that hammerhead. I met Jill Childers of the Fire Department and Andrew Timko of Public Works out there at the site in March to discuss all of the things that they wanted to get and their conditions of approval. One, you can see it on there is, which Mrs. Molnar touched on, was the four foot. These are all things that we're working around and, you know.
Thank you. Your time is up. And I'm sorry, what is your name?
Oh, Ryan Ferguson.
Ryan Ferguson. Oh, okay, so you're the designer?
Right.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Do we have any more public comment?
There were. Good evening. My name is David Gillespie and I am not a neighbor, but I do walk that trail every day. I believe I probably walked a trail 275 days a year for the past 20, 25 years. So I pass that tree all the time. I was unaware that the tree was going to be removed until Jay stopped me yesterday and said, did you see the, did you read the sign? I said, no, I did see a couple of ladies reading the sign a couple of days ago, but I didn't venture out to read it. So when I went and read it and saw that they were actually going to remove the tree, all I could do was think about watching them remove a tree a little further down the trail toward Eleanor Nelson Park. There was a tree there, a couple of trees there that I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with. It's called Sarah's Garden. And her picture was put up on that tree. And I, you know, I tried to find a picture because I took a picture of the tree with the plaque and her picture there. And it dated when it was placed there. And it kind of hurts my feelings every day I pass by there. And there are two great big old stumps there where they cut that tree down. They took the plaque and they put it on the rock. Very nicely done. But believe me, it does not compare with those trees that they took down. And the gentleman just mentioned that this tree could not have been placed in a worse spot. I don't think the tree was placed there. I think that the design of the lot was done after the tree was there. So I take offense to him stating that the tree could not be placed in a worse spot. So I appreciate your time this evening. And I say I'm not a neighbor, but I do have concern for the tree and for the neighbors around that area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment before I close? Public comment? No, going? Oh, wait, you got somebody standing? Come on down. Please push the button for the microphone. Can you push the button? Can you push the button to start the microphone?
Well, this one?
There you go. Thank you.
Me now?
There you go. Thank you.
Good. My name is Roberta Valdez. I'm a longtime Acabell resident. And I'm here not just as a resident who does not live there, but it caught my interest, this particular meeting, that your public hearing that you're having on this particular property. I'm here as a resident, a longtime resident, and I care about that tree. I went and took a walk on Saturday there and I was really blown away by the beauty of that tree. I didn't see any birds. And I say that to you because I'm also coming here as the, I guess I'm the current Conservation Chair for the Napa Solano Audubon Society. And I'm here also to kind of observe how you make the decisions, particularly when it comes to preserving native trees. And in this case, I know it's identified. You talk about replacing six more trees for, if you remove that tree, you know, it's doing well. You know, I'm just here, I guess, as an outsider, but as a resident too, because I care about the oak trees. And I think the city, I wish that the city would do better in protecting the native trees and not just allowing all kinds of development. And I'm not speaking about this particular property plans. I'm just talking about in general. So again, I'm here to observe how you make the decision and I will share that with the Audubon Society. And I take a particular interest. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further speakers for public comment?
Lauren, I did not plan on speaking. I'm just here, I too ran into Jay and I've known Jay for a little bit. But, and I probably passed Mr. Gillespie time and time again. I walk that trail all the time and I marvel at the tree and its beauty and what it offers to us. I know Kathleen also, and I think she's a wonderful person. And I'm sure that the people who are contracting and building there are wonderful people. But my thoughts are, there's so much that we can't control, so many things that we can't, the wildfires, the things that happened in Maui, all of those things where things are desecrated and we can never get back. But this is something of beauty and something of nature that we can save. We can do that right now. And that's, I just think it's a beautiful tree and it means something to many of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any further speakers before I close public comment? Okay. Closing public comment. And I'm bringing this back to the commission to deliberate, provide feedback. Any last further questions to staff? Commissioner Vargas is first.
Yeah, three questions, some for my own interest. But for the property itself, for the tree, have any of the trees been removed or planted on this property to staff's knowledge?
To our knowledge, no.
I thought I saw something in the correspondence that there were trees that were actually planted on that property.
We didn't observe that. If the correspondence or the person that had correspondence here were available to comment on that. Possibly they might be able to elaborate on that, but we didn't observe anything.
Got you. And then property is in a flood zone? Is this a flood zone?
I don't know if it's in a flood zone.
Okay. The reason I ask, again, I saw the correspondence from the public. And has the property been used by any other neighbors, to your knowledge, for any other means, for any means?
Not during the duration of we, of us reviewing this development application.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And next we have Vice Chair Lightfoot.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the participation we've had tonight and the discourse we've had together. It's been very nice. I have a question about state law. And so there's multiple times that the, some, multiple people brought up that the tree could possibly be a protected species or protected by any sort of state law. Does, to your knowledge, is there any state law governing that this tree can't be removed with a tree removal permit?
No. There are protected species when we talk about avian species like birds, plant species like the elderberry shrub because of the elderberry beetle. But oak trees are a species that's native to California. And so the idea is to do the best to build around those native species and preserve them. There are provisions within our municipal code. Every municipality has the ability to adopt ordinances and standards for being able to allow the sequence of reviewing, either approving or denying trees and requiring the replacement of those trees. And that's currently in our municipal code. So the provisions are there. The term being used as protected, I can't verify that. That is in fact accurate. What I can tell you is that we do have a valid process in our municipal code that allows for any property owner to request the removal of any tree that is six inches in diameter when measured at four and a half feet above the ground, whether it's in the front yard, the backyard, side yard, or on a vacant property. And there are certain criteria that we have to go through in order to be able to do that. And calling it a protected tree doesn't override that those provisions are already in place.
And so no corresponding state law that would trump our tree removal process or anything within our code?
No.
Thank you.
Next we have Commissioner Beaumont.
Thank you, Albert, for that. I have a question. We got Mr. Yurk's public comment as correspondence today. Did you have any response to any of the A through H comments that he made?
I think that the response that is helpful maybe for this conversation is that it's the director of community development's job to, and our planning staff's job to implement the code. And it's the director's authority to interpret the code. And so when we look at the different criteria and how to review it, that's how we disclose those pieces of information within our staff report, as well as what we narrated in the presentation. People can have a different opinion about it, but ultimately it's up to the director of community development to render a decision and interpret our zoning ordinance. And that's how we've done it in our staff report. So I didn't find that there was anything that was particularly refuting any of those points that we had previously made within our staff report or on our presentation. I will note that it didn't seem quite accurate to describe the tree as being 250 years old, considering that the applicant had hired an arborist who's licensed to evaluate these trees and they found it to be anywhere from 80 to 120 years old. So if that's helpful for you, Commissioner Beaumont.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
And Commissioner Banta.
It's good now. There you go. All right. Thank you for all your comments about this project and this tree. And thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple of questions about the replacement proposal part. When it says it could support six other trees and that's what was suggested, where did that number six come from? Like where did we get six trees?
It's in our municipal code.
That is the municipal code. Okay. And then I see on C3 of what you gave us, that's the proposed placement for these trees. Is there any concern when they grow that these dripping lines are going to be on the house as well when they reach full maturity?
We have conditions of approval in place, as well as regulations within our municipal code that says there are certain things that you put in improvements near concrete surfaces. So there's linear root areas that you can install in close proximity. This provides the approximate location of where they could be located as they start construction near the end of the development of the project. That's when they would site specific identify where's the best location for the tree to go. This is illustrative to show that there is room still left on the site to be able to accommodate six trees.
Okay. Okay. That's all for you.
I have a quick question before I start giving comments. The six trees, do they have to be Valley oaks? Is there a list of trees that they're able to choose from?
The code does not specify that it has to be exactly the same species. There's a lot.
They can put crepe myrtles up if they want.
I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
I would say that if it is a native species that they're removing, they should try and like kind to replace them. In this particular case, arborist has identified that they could accommodate Valley oak at this location. They wouldn't be held to that. They can do interior alive, which is a much larger one, or they can do coast oak, a blue oak, Oregon oak, lots of different oak species that could be accommodated at this project site to still meet that intent, which is plant native species within our community.
Okay. So they could plant six other native species that could perhaps be smaller. Because one of the concerns was if they planted six Valley oaks, then perhaps we'll be right back in the same spot. Well, in 80 years. But, so that's what I wanted to clarify is that there is a list of other native species that they can plant.
Correct, yeah. But we will note that one of the property owners had noted as part of the public comments that a tree had been planted 30 years ago on their property. These trees can grow if they're taken care of and can be replenished at the site. And in this particular case, I would note that, yes, one tree has been removed or is being proposed to be removed, but six more are being planted. And so when we're talking about replenishing the tree canopy for our community, that's the main goal, really. Replenish it, hit some of the native species if you can. Make sure that you're getting it in a spot that's going to last a long time.
Great. Before we go to comments, do we have any other further commissioner questions? Well, I'll start with my comments. I love trees. I've actually planted eight trees on my little 10,000 square foot lot. However, I also appreciate private property rights. This is their private property. It is a beautiful oak tree. Don't get me wrong. I appreciate the size, the age of this tree. But this is their property that they bought. And I will be voting to support to deny the appeal. Do we have any further comments? Commissioner Beaumont.
Yes, I also love trees too. And I appreciate everyone that spoke on for the tree. However, I do agree with Kathleen that this is private property rights, that the homeowner, the landowner, has the right to do what they want with their property as long as the city approves it. And the city did approve it. They jumped through many hoops to get there. And so with that, I'm going to deny the appeal when it comes to the voting.
Commissioner Lightfoot. Or Vice Chair Lightfoot, excuse me.
So I'm looking through the conditions of approval, Exhibit B. And just clarifying a little bit. So item, where'd it go? Item number seven. So item number seven states applicant shall plant six oak trees on the project site within six months of removal of the existing trees. The tree species shall be same oak species and shall be 15 gallon or 24 inch box size planting. The final landscape plan shall identify the location of these replacement trees. I'm just bringing this up. So does item number seven need to be amended for approval here? Or is that what we're sticking with?
The reason why that condition's written that way is because the arborist was able to verify that the tree species could be supported at the site. However, commission can modify conditions of approval as part of their actions to say, you know what? We think other oak tree species could be, could still meet the intent of what the goal is. And so modification could be applied in this case for that condition.
So just comments for us here. Does any, what are your thoughts on condition number seven? What, the, seems like the way it's written says it needs to be of the same species as a Valley oak, the specific species, or multiple oaks considered in that? So it's Exhibit B, page 26. Item number seven.
I think personally, I think they should be able to plant something that's native, not necessarily constrain them just to Valley oaks. I agree.
Dr. Morris, how would, when we get to the point of making a motion, how would we add this in here?
Thank you, Chair Redding. I would suggest that the maker of the motion specify with a minor amendment to condition seven to allow flexibility about the oak species. And staff would reword the condition in the final resolution.
Thank you. Have any further commissioner comments? Are we ready to make a motion? Anybody want to make, oh, I'm sorry. Doug, I didn't say that. Commissioner Beaumont.
By simple motion, approve the resolution denying the appeal and affirming the community development director's approval of the Molnar residence, minor design review and tree removal permit at 156 Adrian Court, subject to conditions of approval, amendment on condition seven of the type of tree to be planted.
We have a second. Second from Commissioner Banta. Nancy, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Beaumont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. And we will now receive our director's report.
Commissioners, as Planning Manager Bevan moves the slide to the next slide, we will get underway. Since the last commission meeting, there have been two city council meetings. At the July 23rd meeting, the council approved the new digital freeway billboards ordinance. And so that ordinance actually goes into effect soon. I'll talk more about that in a minute. They approved the final approval of the 2024 annual land use and development code update, and they also approved the U-Banks and Cotting Lane general plan and zoning amendments. The last council meeting, just last week, the council received a presentation from the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel for some work they did in downtown Baccaville. If the commission has not seen that presentation on the August 13th, it's the special council meeting that started at 5:00, I really recommend it. We will be getting a final report from the ULI, and I can actually bring that to the commission if there's interest, but the presentation with the folks that visited Baccaville, I thought was especially compelling. And then also on August 13th, the council approved three contracts to launch the East of Leisure Town Road specific plan and environmental impact report. And so that project is kicking off next week with our consultants and staff and the applicant. So. It was a lot of money. Yes, it's, it is, it's a very substantial specific plan. It's a, it's going to be a sub, very substantial legally compliant EIR. And of course, we also have some planning consultant services to help move the project through as an augment to, to city staff. Next slide. I had my staff add some more details to this slide, which I'm not going to read every single one, but we are still looking at what our future planning commission items are going to be. So we do want to bring you a presentation on new housing laws, because there's been interest in that consistently from this commission. We have a Centennial Park master plan that will be coming to the commission for, for your review. And then we have a bunch of pending development projects that will be here someday, but we just don't have necessarily a clear schedule for any of these items. I just want to let you know, we are working on a lot of things that ultimately will be taking us back to commission, and many, most of them also off to council. But I just can't tell you exactly when these things are coming to you. We're just working on them. So that's that. Next slide, please. The building division is even busier than they were. Their building permits issued is up, single family permits down, but still building permits are up. Fees are a little bit down. If we go to the next slide, we can see that inspection activity has been virtually identical for the last three months. It's really unusual to see it sustained at this level and just, I'm not sure what the magic is with 1,254, but that is our current magic over the last three months. So if you want to get a building permit, maybe you can get us up to 55 in the next month. And so total building permits issued to date, actually July was greater than June as far as issuance goes. So again, activity is very strong. I think my building official told me we have seven subdivisions under construction right now, which is a lot for a city of our size. Let's go to the next slide. Solar permits are actually up a bit. I'm thinking that's with the new home construction, because the new building codes require that new homes have solar panels. But they're still generally trending with the rest of our building permit activity. Okay, let's go to the next slide. This is where, you got this one?
Turn the microphone on.
Thank you. Good evening. For the current planning monthly report, so for District One, we primarily had building permits of residential and commercial types. District Two, we have to, we received two new projects, one for Robert Strange House Plans, and one for driveway improvements at 777 Almira Road. We approved the Molar Residence, which was an appeal tonight, and the, of course, the Jepson Center Drive Thru. District Three, we approved the food truck, excuse me. District Four, building permits only. District Five, Lower Lagoon Valley Event Center was submitted, and we approved house plans, another set of house plans for Lower Lagoon Valley as well. And, excuse me, District Six, building permits only. Terms of advanced planning, so we've got a lot, as Director mentioned, we have a lot of stuff happening, especially in the advanced planning field. Housing element program implementation, we'll continue to find items for 2024 and 2025 to, to bring to you for implementation. We had our third meeting with development community, which was, I think, well attended. We sent about 227 invites. At that meeting, our, one of our consultants for the inclusionary housing, Century Urban, had a chance to engage the development community on top, in terms of what they see as obstacles for inclusionary housing, or what their general thoughts were on inclusionary housing and how that can be achieved in Vacaville. So that was good, good meeting. We're going to have our last meeting of the year, late September. Allison Priority Development Area Specific Plan, we had that kickoff, which consisted of a tour of the PDA area. Excuse me. And then followed up by a meeting with our consultants and staff. And so that was kicked off on August 6th, and we're going to go forward with that project. It's anticipated to be completed in 2026. East of Leisure Town, the kickoff meeting, as Director mentioned, is on August 27th. We've been preparing for that project as well, which is going to be a pretty big lift. And then inclusionary housing, we're continuing to meet with our consultants. And at our next meeting, CPC, which is the primary consultant for inclusionary housing, is going to give a brief, a brief presentation and engage development community like Century Urban did. So those are the items for advanced planning.
I've got a couple of announcements. Starting on August 22nd, in two days, the city will begin to accept applications for digital freeway billboards. The way the new ordinance is structured, in order to propose a digital billboard, whether it's a replacement or as a new billboard, there's a lot of things that an applicant needs to bring to the table. So we have a website that is either live, or will be going live ahead of the 22nd, that really lists out all the application requirements, the criteria, link to the ordinance. We already have several companies approaching us. We anticipate we will have multiple applications right from that first day. And we'll keep the commission apprised, any digital billboard applications will come to this commission with the development agreement, ease permit, design review. So buckle up, I think. Clear Channel, thank you, thank you Commissioner Beaumont for the question. Clear Channel was the company that, when they found out that our code does not allow digital billboards, they paid for the cost of the ordinance development and the SEQA. They do have an application that's been on hold, waiting for the new ordinance to go into effect. So there are one pending application that we can pick up as soon as the ordinance goes into effect, but we have multiple other parties interested in other sites too. Okay, staffing updates. We have a new associate planner coming to us from Dallas, Texas. He starts the beginning of September. He is, has family connections in California. But anyway, we're just so excited. It appears he is packing his bags and heading this way. I am recruiting for an assistant director. I'm looking for someone who wants to have some longevity with the city of Vacaville. If you know anyone, the application period closes on September 3rd. And we are actually on the cusp of putting out our senior building inspector recruitment, which is very exciting. The plans examiner recruitment, we'll follow that, another really good add for the building team. The theme is continually trying to staff up, refill our vacant positions, and definitely pursuing it actively right now. And when we have our new planner on board, we'll bring him here and introduce him. I think that's it for my presentation. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Well, thank you. All right, we will move on to commissioner comments. This portion of the agenda is for commissioners to inform each other of items of potential interest to other commissioners, such as inter-agency meetings, or offer announcements as appropriate. I will start with, I'll start with Commissioner Beaumont. Okay, well, thank you. Commissioner Banta?
I was just going to give a shout out to Pony Baseball for, since our last meeting, they hosted the World Series for nine U, and so that was really exciting for those little boys to play with different countries from all over the world. And I'm really excited to hear, learn more about the advanced planning stages and all the housing. The, the pit count came out for homelessness recently, and our numbers are very, very high for unsheltered, and so it's really exciting to see that we're really taking seriously the inclusionary housing component and building for affordable housing as well as executive housing. So I'm, I'm excited to see more of that coming up.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lightfoot?
I, I do not have a comment tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Vargas?
Thank you to staff, excellent presentations. I, I will say I was a bit concerned with the correspondence from some of the public related to the 156 Adrian Court. If true, some of the conduct of, of the neighbors on that vacant property. So I hope is that the city will look into some of the allegations that were brought forth, I believe by Kathleen Ramos, related to that property. Other than that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't have anything terribly exciting, but tonight, I will be closing this meeting in memory of a Vacaville resident who passed away last month. Originally from New Jersey, he was a resident of District Six, having moved to Vacaville in 1978 with his wife and his stepson. A former Navy man who was stationed at Hunter's Point, then continued working as a civilian at Hunter's Point, Mare Island, then finishing at Alameda until they closed the base. After retirement, he spent most of his time volunteering, accumulating thousands, literally thousands of hours at Kaiser Hospital, and participating for many years with Opportunity House's Festival of Trees. This man was Russell Henderson, also known as Hendy, a name he got in the Navy, and he was my uncle. He loved Vacaville and was so very proud of the many things that the city offers for families, for kids and seniors. He and my aunt, she passed away two years ago, are the reason my family moved here. And had, and he has been my inspiration for volunteering and giving back to the community. I grew up here in Vacaville without actually growing up here, because I spent so much time here. And my uncle loved Vacaville so much. And so tonight, I would like to close the meeting in his memory. Good night, Vacaville.